Okay, we need to order, please, start. Pledge.
Okay.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
President Warner?
Yeah.
Secretary Treasurer Horowitz?
Yeah.
Trustee Pell?
President.
Trustee Stafford?
Yeah.
Trustee Walker, I assume, is on her way?
I hope so.
Okay, we have a quorum present, sir.
All right. First off, Billy, do you want to discuss, or you want me to just discuss, the sandblasting of the pump-out boat, the one boat that was painted with the improper paint that needs to be sandblasted? And as I did discuss it with Al, I guess you had discussed it-
Yeah, we both have discussed it with Al. I guess we just have to see if where the money's going to come from. The boats are owned by the town. They should, might be money in the maintenance for that.
Well, I'm assuming that-
Did you check on that?
What I did was I spoke to Senior Constable Tizolo. I don't know if you guys were aware, but they did inform me that we're going to need two outboard motors also.
Yes.
So I asked them to put together a proposal, the two outboard motors and the necessary repairs for this vessel. And I think we should speak to our liaison, Julie Lofstad.
Sure.
I also did advise her of this. I asked her to circle back to Al Tizolo, our senior constable. And I think we need to put this together, especially since we're at the budget phase where the town board is working on adopting a budget. I said, since it's a town property and it's a town program, technically, they need to find the funds. We did contribute, obviously, eighteen thousand roughly to outfit one of the boats with the winch and the boom and all of that, right? So we're contributing as well, but I think they need to-
You don't know how much is in the budget line now for that?
I don't know how much is in the town side budget line, but based on the fact that they're working on-
Because if it's six boats, we'd figure five grand apiece. So that's thirty grand. They spent it already.
And you figure those two engines will probably eat that up right there.
Oh, yeah, and some.
Right? So before you get anywhere.
Well, the five thousand dollars for each boat hasn't been awarded yet, so-
No, but you have last year's.
Yeah. So that's, I'm assuming that there's still money in there. And that's specifically for maintenance and repairs of the boats, which would probably fall under the bottom painting and the sandblasting. But the outboard engines is a whole different-
Investment.
Investment as far as the amount of money that needs to be put into the program.
Well, Julie's been our liaison for, you know, for quite some time. I had a nice conversation with her. I asked Al to put together some documents that everybody could look at. You know, listen-
So we have to wait for Al to get the paperwork?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think that we do, and I think we'll move that along, and I think-
Maybe we can find out how much money's left over this past year for the, out of the five thousand awardment for each boat. Because if there's money there, we can get it sandblasted right away then.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, it's something that's got to be done, obviously, with the-
Yeah, that way you can bring the boat back and put it to sleep.
Exactly.
Get ready for the spring.
Exactly, and then, you know, the two outboards were very unreliable, and, you know, it's not-
No lot of time on them.
Yeah.
Well, moving forward with the Bay Constables overseeing the program, the maintenance schedules on all the boats will be up to par, and so the boats, the longevity of the engines in the boat should go much further. One other thing I'd like to have incorporated in that information that is given to our councilperson, Julie Lofstad, is the amount of effluent that's taken out of the environment since the inception of the program, and specifically this year. I believe last year it was well over a hundred thousand gallons of effluent that was removed, and that's a huge benefit to the environment. So the tens of thousands of dollars that are going to be paid on a new engine is not really-
I think they're working on the totals now.
Okay.
It's a fantastic program.
Yes.
It really is. We need to keep that program running.
And it's free for the public, so which is a wonderful thing. All right. I see Billy Mack is not here, but I can go over the New York clam dredging and seeding quickly. Um, New York Homeowners Association have approached our board asking for some of the dredging of the underwater lands within New York Creek. It had been done back in the fifties and sixties, and it also has been done a couple times subsequently since then. There are several shallow areas in the creeks that need to be redone. The homeowners association have gotten permits with the help of First Coastal. And one of the, one of our things that we had asked them to do for the project is to do a proposal of reseeding hard clams within New York Creek away from the dredge areas. Two of the areas that have been proposed, one on the inner part of New York Creek and one of the, on the way out of New York Creek, they're both historically good areas for shellfish, and they are away from the dredged, proposed dredged area, and they're both in seasonally uncertified waters. That meaning it's closed basically from the end of, the beginning of May until the first day of December, so the whole entire spawning season, the clams will be in there to be able to spawn, and I believe they're, I think they're good areas, so-
Did he say what size clams?
Uh, he did not, but there's going to be two thousand dollars' worth of clams that are purchased by the homeowners association through Cornell. They'll be similar to the size clams that we have gotten. I'm assuming because they'll grow them all at the same time, and the clams that we had gotten were about twenty-five to forty millimeters, which are pretty good-sized clams.
They have a chance of living.
Yes. So I think this is a good project to partner the homeowners association with us and brings a real positive environmental proponent to the project, so-
And when?
Any questions or anything?
When will those be put in?
Probably in the next week or so. I asked to get the information so I could present it to the board. If everybody's good with the areas, I will contact Billy after the meeting and tell him it's a go. And do you want Greg to take GPS coordinates and tracks where they put the clams and some pictures for us to have-
So that we know where they are?
Yep.
Yeah, so we go back and check on them.
Yep. Because every year they put the clams over, and oysters and shellfish over for us, they do track where they go and give us coordinates, so, you know, we have accountability for that.
Is he done with his dredging in there?
No, he's not. They only did a very small part of it. There's a considerable amount more that needs to be done. I don't know when they're going to start it, but once I give him a call, I'll get the more information and present it to everybody.
This picture really works to show the other spur.
Yes, the one on the-
But I think on the first dredging project, before he left the beach, he was supposed to reseed some grasses too, wasn't he?
Yes, he was. I don't know if that, I don't know if that ever happened. I haven't been down yet to see.
I didn't see no grass down there.
All right. Bringing that to the light, that the spur that is the main entrance channel to New York and is questioned whether it's Morton's Refuge, the National Marine Fisheries and Wildlife people, they actually own the underwater lands, or we do. If you look at this aerial, you can clearly see the dredge area that had been done since the seventies, that this spur is directly in the channel, and I really believe that it is our underwater land that this spur is-
This pond.
Yes, the spur is sitting on. But because the county offered for mitigation purposes that they were going to put material on the north side of the channel, on the north, on the Morton's Refuge site, it's really become problematic because they have no way of getting the equipment there, and because of their backlog of work from last winter's dredging, that they're not going to do this project this year or in the spring. They're going to, actually, they're going to go to Southold. They're not even going to do the project in Northwest Harbor, which was supposed to be done also. Because the dredge, as Billy and I are aware, has been broken down-
Several times.
Several times, and they finally got it up and running, and I believe it's about, well, since the first of October, they've been working either in Cold Springs or in Sabonic. They're finished Sabonic now, right, Bill?
Yeah, they're left, left already.
So that means-
A couple days ago.
Yeah, that means they're headed over to Fresh Pond to do that channel on our underwater lands there, where we had stockpiled the sand last dredging, last spring's dredging season. They're going to do that, even though we recommend it being done in the springtime, there'll be no availability of the county to do any work in the spring for us because there's so backlog with Southold's.
So Fish and Wildlife didn't want the sand on their property?
No, they did want the sand on their property.
That's what I thought.
But they couldn't accommodate them because it's going to take them so much longer to get the pipes there, and, you know, logistically, it's very difficult for them. So they're going to neither, they're not going to do that one, they're not going to do Northwest Harbor, they're just going to go to Southold, where they have all the permits and there's no issues over there, so. So we're going to end up not getting one of the channels. And also, they've had probably, out of the dredge season, which today's the, what, the thirteenth? So they basically, they've had forty-five days of dredge time, and I believe the dredge has been down like well over, almost thirty of it.
Yeah.
So there's a problem.
Do they get a new dredge in the spring?
I wonder if they would pay us to try to get Costello in there with that long reach? Not Costello, whatever.
Yeah, but how would they get the machine there unless they barge it in? There's no access-
There's no road going down there?
There's no road going down there.
We drove the beach last time we went in there for a brush fire.
Yeah, but there's no, there's no, logistically, there's no way to get there unless you go all the way around the point.
Right.
Which is like four miles?
Well, it beats having a boat on the ground on that and somebody getting hurt.
Well, I mean, you're prob-
Let me do the research on it, we'll go from there.
Yeah, I mean, and you're going to have to give Suffolk County a call and make sure that there's an active permit there, because the last time I was having a conversation, there was issues with the permit, and I don't know if it was the red knots or the permit itself.
Okay.
So there's quite a few moving obstacles.
Never fails.
That was one of the spots that they were definitely at, but that was, you know, I think November first is the day that the red knots leave. We have Jessica Kuleski from our office here to discuss boat slips?
Yeah. So as you guys know, we switched the dock slip program from a lottery to, on an annual basis, the people have the opportunity to renew. There is a guy who reached out to me back in September, I think he works for the town of Brookhaven. He has a slip, I believe, in Spianke Shore Canal. He reached out to me because he was interested in possibly transferring slips to get a different size. They're all different sizes in there. I think he wants to get a boat maybe that's twenty-six feet, and I think his slip is a lot smaller than that. So I just wanted to come to you guys to see maybe how we, now that this is kind of new, it's not done lottery-style anymore, how do we go about transferring and letting people, you know, do that? I don't really know how to handle it.
Well, my thought is that-
Go ahead, go ahead.
Go, Bill.
I want you to go.
My thought is-
Your senior goes first.
Is the availability of slips, and larger slips, because they use up a lot more areas, you know, because it's a larger boat, but there's a lot less of them. When we had the lottery system, we had, you know, we would actually take the boats from the lottery and stick them in each individual spot that worked.
Right.
Now, this way, when they're coming and they have a slip and they go to get a bigger boat, you know, there might not be the availability. So what we're going to probably need to do is sit down with the Bay Constables, go over each one of our facilities-
Mm-hmm.
And see how many twenty-six-foot, or what are the maximum-sized boats that could fit in there, and then see how many there are of each of them, and then work back from there.
Okay. Yeah, so he had recommended that, I guess he included in this packet here, that the town of Brookhaven does a non-refundable administrative fee of twenty-five dollars per marina for, I guess, to just go on the waiting list and then also to request a transfer, I guess, pending that it's available. So I was just wondering if you guys wanted to do something like that, or-
Well, how many of our facilities have waiting lists? I mean, I know that we-
Eastport is not full. Actually, there's, there's, it's like nine out of twenty-nine spaces available.
That's where he wants a bigger slip, isn't he?
No.
How big is the book that he wants to put in?
Twenty-six feet. And right now...
And does he want to be at what we call, under the blue book, one of the trustees' residential docking facilities?
Yes.
All right, so the blue book has a size limit of twenty-six feet.
Right, right. So I guess he was just trying, he was reaching out to me to figure out how to switch slips, if possible, but I don't know that he's going to be able to because it's full. Spianke is now full. So I just wanted to kind of talk to the board and see how they wanted to handle this going forward, because I don't think that he's going to be the first, nor the last, to want to do this.
Have him put on a waiting list, and when the availability comes, you know, the first person on the waiting list, if they're in need of a slip, then it would go to him or them.
Maybe a logistical transfer there, is there a smaller boat that he could switch with?
Yeah, it might be a smaller boat and a bigger slip.
Yeah, maybe there's a smaller boat that we slotted in there that doesn't need that big.
You're going to have to talk to the Bay Constables or-
Okay.
See exactly where it sits.
That's what I'll do.
We may be able to just switch them if there's a smaller boat and a larger slip. We may be able to just-
That's true.
So I think we should check that first.
Sure.
Each one of our facilities, the slip, you should put the minimum and maximum size vessel in each one, so, and then you can-
Right. I think that was done-
Like reconfigure them?
I think that was done last year, but I'll ask Rich to see if they're accurate.
We could be in a situation where there was, someone had a boat, there was a spot left-
That's true.
-a smaller boat, and maybe they could just switch, and it all works for everything.
All righty.
But I would definitely start a waiting list for the year, for year, and because next year, some of the facilities might even be less full, or, you know, so there might be openings that come about. If you're on a waiting list, then you get the ability to go move in quickly.
Sure. So even though he has a slip, we're going to allow him to go on a waiting list?
Yeah.
Just to-
You have to mark that it's for a transfer.
Okay.
Yeah, that suggestion that he had about how Brookhaven's handling it sounded like it was pretty easy, pretty reasonable.
Yeah.
It's not like a big deal. Maybe we should look at that.
Okay. All right, thanks, guys.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jessica.
Do you want how to stay and do the documents, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Procedure for non-renewals, expired waterfowl hunting location permits. You're busy today.
Yes.
I'm busy every day.
True. So these are going to be the ones, so the October 31st deadline, we've gotten a couple of, I guess you'd call them appeals, late renewals. There are seven people who have not sent in any kind of renewal, or an appeal, or a letter, anything. So I just didn't know how you guys wanted to handle that.
Are those seven people, is this the first time it happened to them, or it's on a repeat?
I'd have to look into that. I mean-
I see the list for a second.
Yeah.
I did have a conversation with Bay Constable Franks, and being that we changed the date this year, there's a lot of confusion going around.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, and I don't know how, I mean, we've been very lenient several times through the duck hunting program. We change stuff. You know, it would be up to the board if we want to continue that ability to be lenient and allow for this year to be the last year that we give this much leniency as far as the, for the availability of them getting their proper documentation in. I know historically, it was much later in the year.
December 31st.
Many people were already actively hunting. I'm not going to, and so it's kind of like, it's like them getting out of bed, going to the trustees, renewing their stuff, and going hunting. Now, it's kind of like, they get out of bed, and like, what, I forgot, you know, and I had several people in the community say, you know, it's, you know, it's, unless we're actively doing it, we kind of put it off to the last minute.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it's not a good, it's not a good answer, but, you know-
And given the timing of when the amendment to section 38 went into effect-
Yes.
Really, for this year, we would still operate under the old deadlines, and, you know, it would be the 2019 season that would really, where we would, you know, adhere to the new deadlines.
Okay.
The next duck season, yeah.
Okay.
How about giving those seven people a phone call?
I think that would be smart, you know, and one of the larger things that I think is important is, you know, sort of, when people are, have not mailed in their renewal, calling them, finding out if there's a good cause for it.
Yeah.
And, you know, determining.
If you want, I'll call them, because most, some of those people work during the daytime, so you have to call them at night, unless you want to do it.
Sure, yeah, we can coordinate.
Historically, we had sent all registered letters out to them so that they could document that they got the letter and that there's no, phone calls seem to be good on certain instances, but to cover us, I don't know.
No, I agree.
Yeah.
So you want me to send a letter to these seven people?
Yeah, we can do both.
I would send a letter and a trustee for the area.
Yeah, because then we would have the paperwork to back up what's going on.
Okay.
If there's any that are in my area.
Okay, I'll let you guys know.
Okay.
Okay.
I mean, you can break it down, each one of the trustees' area, and-
They could get a phone call and a letter.
Yeah.
That'll cover everything.
Okay, so we're going to give them until December 31st then?
Yep.
Okay, all right.
Everybody in agreement with that?
Yes.
Okay.
That sounds reasonable. Makes sense. It's reasonable.
Okay, thank you, guys.
The next item on the agenda is the 2019 fee schedule. We all have copies of the proposed, well, no, the current fee schedule, and we're in need of any of the trustees making recommendations as far as the 2019 fee schedule. I know we did some adjustments last year, so, I mean, there's some more stuff that should be, you know, looked at closer in here, as far as, you know, beach permits is for pullover inspections and events on the beach.
Replacement fee for shelfish cards?
Yes.
We have a number of people who need replacements.
I mean, we do give out a free resident shellfish card, but I think there should be, I mean, some sort of a fee the second, that they come back in for a replacement card, because it does cost us almost, what, two dollars per?
It's, I mean, the cards, the ink, the-
Gauge.
And the gauge.
The gauge is custom-made.
Yes.
Yes, so-
First is free, second, there should be a charge.
Yeah, I think so, because-
It's reasonable. It's fair.
Yep. All right, so do you want to go over this now, or do you want to take it and look at it and get back? I mean, how do you want to-
So the way it is right now, this was an email that I had sent out to Lisa, you know, just getting our, our different resolutions for budget season-
Yes.
-in place. And so this one right now, the current fee and the proposed fee are exactly the same.
Yes.
I wanted to leave it up to the board to determine which ones they want to change. So, I mean, that's something, I know that we're on a bit of a tight schedule for today, so if individual trustees want to, you know, let me know, or if they all go through Ed and then, you know, just so that by the time this is supposed to be on as a resolution-
Yes, we have all the information.
We have all the new numbers, and then, you know, we can look at it again when we're at a regular meeting.
I have a, Agwam parking permit is on here?
What's that?
Agwam parking permit?
Uh, I believe it's on, yes. Please, Nolan Daley.
Yeah, it is. Page one.
Right under Boat Room.
Yes.
Under Boat Room.
Yep, Lake Agwam.
Good job.
Were they all sold out this season this year? Because I know that-
Um, did we get, did Brandy get the refunds yet? Do we know? Want me to call her? See if she'll come up?
Why don't you get it for the next?
For the next meeting, because that way, we might outprice ourselves on this.
Okay.
If they're not selling out, we might want to lower it to sell them out.
Okay. Well, I think-
I heard through, you know, people had said that, you know, they're not buying them like they used to, you know?
Mm-hmm. We have, we have at least one more work session before this has to actually be voted on, right? Right, we wanted to adopt this prior to the first of the year so that the office would be able to function for the 2019, start the 2019.
That's the only question I would have is on that.
Okay. Brandy, I think Brandy's going to come up, she could tell you, Bill.
I've got a question on that.
Sure.
Since that's some of the trustees, and that's land of the trustees.
Yeah.
And the trustees require everybody to be a resident, or whatever the other word is for us.
Freeholder taxpayer.
Huh?
Freeholder taxpayer.
Freeholder. And how do we know who these people are getting the permits? If that's land owned by the trustees-
Good point.
That should be taken into consideration.
Sure. Lisa, do you have any more information about how that process?
I mean, I don't want to make more work for the girls in the office, but-
Yeah, I mean, um-
The reason that we have the bathing corp-
I don't know what they require.
Give out the permits is because a lot of them are given out on Sundays, Saturdays and Sundays. We're not open on the weekend. I had this discussion with Jessica about e-permitting and going, you know, online stuff, and you're going, we're going to be sending out to all the residents that we're going to be doing e-permitting, so that eventually, we can move it from the bathing corp to our office. But it's kind of difficult because we're not open on the weekends, and like I said, the majority of the permits are given or sold to the, you know, people on the weekends.
Right. That's not my question. My question is-
I would say most of the bathing members are village-owned taxpayers.
They are.
I would say nine.
You go by there and you see a lot of out-of-state plates.
Oh, yeah, but they own houses here.
Well, I'd want to see a little proof in the book.
Yeah. I don't blame you, but I would say, most of the, most of the yet-to-be members there, it's hard to get a membership there, and you have to be, it's like-
And there are daily passes which, you know, allow for people to be non-resident.
And they sell this permit to the person for the exact same fee that we charge them?
No, they charge an up fee of, I believe, ten dollars?
A non-resident.
Administrator fee. We went through this prior to Martha being on the board with Kara, and she didn't seem to have an issue with them charging like a service fee to administer the permit.
That's their own money, it doesn't come out of what the trustees collect in terms of-
Correct. We're asking for two hundred dollars, and we get two hundred dollars, or we get thirty dollars for a day pass. All right, so do you want to put a date on this, by Friday or something, that we can get this back to the office so we can get it to Martha to look at?
I mean, the meeting's on Monday, and the next work session after that is the 28th-
Yeah.
Of November. So that gives us two weeks. You want to do the, have a, have a working draft by the 28th?
That would be.
That's fair. Okay, all right.
Are we also gonna take into consideration about the freeholder status or resident?
Um, you know, I think that might be, it should be taken into account. It's up to the board to determine if they, how they want to proceed with, with, you know, the bathing corp.
I know it's gonna become problematic, but I, I don't, I know, it's, it's, you know, it's the ability for, to sell them. They can come to our office, but our office isn't open when they're looking. So, I mean.
Do it by, on email or whatever you want to do it.
Well, that's why I'm, we're in the process of doing e-permitting. We're gonna contact all the people that we have a list of names, and we're gonna contact everybody that has a permit so that they can do it online permitting, so we can verify their status of, feel the taxpayer, resident, non-resident. I mean, if you want to go further than that, I, I mean, I guess we can, but it's gonna be, you know, problematic as far as selling these, because I know I went through this with Kara a couple of years ago, and so, that's my thought. So, if you want to.
I, I don't think we have a choice. It's, it's in the patent, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
And we're here to enforce the patent, or when we feel, if, if it's our needs, do we enforce it?
I think our time and energy is better spent elsewhere.
I agree fully, but I agree that we need to enforce the patent equally to all, not just some.
Well, I believe we're gonna get a name, a list of names this year from Agwa.
Yeah, they usually give us the last of all the people.
So, we'll, we'll go through it and see what it looks.
Reference here.
We'll go through it, Bruce, and see what it looks like.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take some time.
I don't have it in front of me, so I can't, I can't really speak to it, so we'll look into it, all right?
Take some time to review.
Yes. All right. Billy, you have a duck line appeal here?
Yep, duck line. Do you want to discuss this letter, Martha?
Uh, sure.
Um, we, we got a copy of a letter from Nancy L. Farman, and I asked Martha to check on ownership of this property and to see how far away, way, it was away from Becker's house.
Um, well, so, this was, this letter we received was regarding 503 Todd Point Road, which is an unimproved parcel in Davis Creek. It's marshland. The letter states that they represent Nancy Fardelman, formerly Nancy Mills, and that, that they are the current owners of the property. So, I did some research with the records in Suffolk County Clerk's Office, and, hold on, let me just get them all in order. There are several deeds that have gone back and forth with respect to this parcel, but in general, the ownership is with Mr. Becker. It is not with Nancy.
And how about the history of the ownership? How, who is the history?
Sure. So, here's, here's sort of the overview. The history that I have just from this brief printout shows a history of, from Harold Mills to Margaret Michael, also known as Margaret Mills, and then from Margaret Michael Mills to William Becker for both 63 Hidden Court and, what is this, 503 Todd Point Road. And then we have two deeds from Nancy Fardelman. From, from Margaret Mills, it was a 50% interest in both properties to Mr. Becker, and then we have deeds from Nancy Fardelman to William Becker, and in fact, the relevant deeds in that case state.
A little confusing because I thought it was in Mr. Becker's family all this time. It's in his wife's family all this time?
I, I don't know if it's his, actually his wife, but I just know that it's in the Mills family.
It might be his sister or something.
But the, the deeds from Nancy Fardelman to Mr. Becker specifically state it is the intent of this correction deed to erase and extinguish the life estate heretofore apparently retained by Nancy L. Fardelman. The grantor herein, Nancy L. Fardelman, is the same persons as the one of the named grantees in the deed from March, May 16, 1997. But, you know, the point of this is that Nancy Fardelman extinguished her interest in the property, and so, Mr. Becker retained ownership from not only Nancy, Nancy Fardelman, where she extinguished her interest, but also from Margaret Michael, AKA Margaret Mills, who gave her 50% interest.
Who, who wrote the letter?
Uh, the letter was written by an attorney named Russell Bertieri, Bertieri. He's an attorney from Garden City, New York, and claims to represent Nancy Fardelman.
Who has no interest in the property.
Um, according to the preliminary research I did, I could not find any ownership in Nancy Fardelman unless, you know, the parties want to submit evidence to the contrary, but in terms of what's recorded in the Suffolk County Clerk's Office, it's these deeds.
Okay. Thank you very much for doing the research.
You're welcome.
Still confused on the property, but, I will go on.
I'm sorry.
Anything else on the deck appeal?
Um, well, with respect to that letter, I know just that ownership of the property in question of 503 Todd Point Road is in Mr. William Becker.
All right. Thank you.
And this piece of property in question, it's basically, it's all marshland, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Surrounded by two town properties and.
Trustee bottomed.
Trustee owned underwater lands.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. So, that's that for the duck line stuff. Bruce, you have a Merrill Buff, 14 Berkshire Drive, Sag Harbor, New York.
He's up off of Berkshire. At the end of the road and it's extended, we have a Old Sag Harbor Road, which is right in front of it. It's like a paper road.
Old Noyack Road.
Huh?
Old Noyack Road.
Yeah, Old Noyack Road, sorry. And the best I can see it is the turnaround, and this road, which is Berkshire Drive, was taken over by the town. They plow it, they maintain it. This circle in the middle that he says he's maintained for a while.
It's, it's not the circle in the middle. It's actually his property extending into the.
It infringes on our paper road.
It infringes on our paper road and the town highway department's right-of-way for, for that circle. I looked at the subdivision map for Berkshire.
Drive.
Berkshire Drive, that subdivision, the Burke Estates, and, you know, it, it writes on the subdivision map that they acknowledge that Old Noyack Road is a trustee road, but that the part that's in that circle will be improved to highway standard. So, yes, that little section is maintained by the highway, but our ownership still remains in.
Is that who you're talking about?
Right, where it's paved.
It looks like the road goes through the, the turnaround itself.
Yeah, the road goes through the turnaround and it was improved because that provides emergency access, right, and turnaround?
Right.
But, um, Mr. Merrill's property is, uh, yes, yes, and you can see he's landscaped south of his property boundary, partially into the road right-of-way and partially into our paper road. Or, I mean, the, I've looked at aerials from the 30s and even the 60s, and there was a well-beaten dirt path there back in the day.
Uh, my question is, where does this paper road lead?
Um, it goes pretty far. It's, I mean, it's a long piece of, of road.
Is it something, because I know.
Yeah.
Old Sag Harbor Road, and we went back and forth. Bruce, you familiar with this? They wanted to open it up for access for two properties, one property that.
Property owner.
What's that?
Might be some property owner.
So, if, if in the future, the property owners need to get access to their property, and it's a landlocked property other than this paper road, they're gonna need to open this up. So, I think it would be in our best interest to have this landscaping and other such moved off of our property, because I don't want the owner, this Mr. Merrill, to, to claim ownership of this.
Correct.
And this is, you know, I, I don't know what's going on up here, you know, you know, future properties being sold and this being the only access point, because what had happened on the Old Sag Harbor Road, the one that came off of Millstone Road, somehow there was a land swap that happened between the trustees and the property owner, and it went from 50 feet to 10 feet, and, and it was a flag lot, and there was no ability to come off of the Millstone Road to the two properties that were landbound. It would have to come off of Old Sag Harbor Road on the west side, and it got really, you know, heated and, and I don't want to lose access for people that own property up here.
Well, this goes over the Northview, head east, and I don't know how far it goes over the other way.
But, I mean, do you understand what I mean, Bruce?
100%.
If this is allowed to stay here and he claims title, it's gonna basically potentially landlock.
Correct.
Any of the properties that could be up here, and then the property owners would not be able to sell their property and.
No, that's not gonna work.
The value of it, you know, this, this is kind of like we went through with the, the other piece of property that.
Has to move it.
Yeah.
It's not gonna work.
Okay.
Sorry to take so long to explain.
So, but just for the, for the board's own edification, in general, a private citizen cannot claim adverse possession over government-owned property, provided it's owned in its governmental capacity. So, while the trustees are a government agency, I would argue that, that this road is owned by the trustees in their government, governmental capacity because it has been traditionally used as a road, but I think it's important to preserve the trustees' ownership rights and make clear that, you know, the trustees.
How about if we get it surveyed and then we put some markers up there? We have those markers, the 10 signs.
Well, you know, I think Mr. Mr. Merrill was looking for some sort of.
Who's Mr. Merrill?
Oh, Mr. Buff.
Terry Buff?
Yeah.
Merrill Buff. Sorry. So, Mr. Buff, in his letter, it looks like he's seeking some sort of relief from the trustees to allow the landscaping to remain in place, which it sounds like this board thinks infringes too much on its ability to maintain the road.
I tend to agree with Bill, though. I think we should have that piece checked from one end to the other end.
Yeah.
And I think we might be surprised.
Have it surprised and have the guy who was up on the property, you know, turn back their stuff or it becomes ours.
All right.
It looks like it's gonna be removed, Billy, by the size of the trees.
Yeah.
I mean, hopefully he can move them onto his property.
Well, I think he has adequate space on his property for a few more trees. I mean, it's not a small piece of property.
Probably were small trees when they planted, not at big trees.
As long as it gets off ours.
Yeah, I, I, I just, I know this could be problematic because I've already dealt with it in the past, and, you know, there's been land swaps that have been done between the trustees and property owners, and they've never been truly followed up on, so I want to make sure, being that I'm on this board now, that this gets taken care of.
Okay. How would you like to proceed in that? A letter from council to Mr. Buff?
A letter from council to Mr. Buff.
Stucking him to remove.
Yep. And also, we should contact the surveyor, a surveyor to have him, we did use squires and Holden to do the other roadway because they had all the original subdivision maps of the area, so it was easier for them to do it. They didn't have to start from scratch.
Okay.
So, maybe we should contact the owner of Berkshire Drive.
I, I, I can look and see who did the.
Subdivision?
Subdivision map. I want to say it was squires Holden. But, yeah, so we can, we can do that and.
Yeah, because they would have all the meets and bounds and everything that's here now.
Sure.
And then, then we could ask them to do this.
Get it staked out?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's important.
Okay.
Permanent monuments there.
You put some monuments.
It would be nice to have them on the sides of the road, so when people do go by there, and if they do own property near, they know that they would always have access to it.
Right.
Make a clear determination.
And, and, you know, you can see sort of from this, from this image that we have to the south, someone's driveway is.
See that? Right in there.
Yeah, I think that's another.
Looks like it goes right over the rocks back.
Maybe, I, maybe, I, does it go with that? So, it, it is.
They might have dead property behind that land.
Well, it's old, old Noyack Road then. It's a dirt road at that portion, and it's a, it's an actual operative road. You can drive a vehicle or dirt bike or something on it, or a horse.
Cows.
Yes, cows. All right.
Okay.
All right. We have, time to do the general permits and applications, permit applications.
I got one here. When you're ready?
Yeah, go ahead, Scott.
Vinmar Builders, 23 Tarpon Road, East Quad. It's a Sean Barron. This is a Schenoch Shaw's. It's a applicant has proposed to replace the existing bulkhead, 90 feet, in place with sea lock 4,500 vinyl sheet. They secured with six-by-six whaler, three-quarter by 12 tie rods, eight-inch diameter deadman. Bulkhead will be finished with two two-by-six followers and a two-by-six timber cap. All wood shall be non-treated, and all the fasters will be hot-dipped galvanized. There will not be any elevation in height on this project. There will be a 10-foot wide native vegetative buffer land with a bulkhead. It meets all the Blue Book.
Sounds good.
Requirements. It's all the.
Everybody good with it?
Mm-hmm. You advancing this, Scott?
Yeah, advancing.
I have seen Realty LLC. Address is 5 Edgemia Drive, Southampton, and they have the wrong canal on here, so you might have to fix this cover sheet.
Okay, I'll tell James.
Yeah, it's a renewal. If Quad Canal, okay? So, renew, a renewal permit of BLK 00099 to remove and replace 121-feet timber bulkhead in place with vinyl bulkhead and remove and replace three feet of 121 timber walk in place and kind established 10-foot wide no buffer, buffer to be planted with beach grass, one foot on center. Construct a new 10-foot return west, on the west side property. Remove existed dock, construct a new dock, consist of four feet by 17 fixed timber cap with open gradient deck and support by six-by-six posed with three-by-12 ramp on a six-by-20 float by two eight-inch diameter poles, piles, as shown as planned by N Consultant 917. This dock has already been built, and I think they just want to clear it up to get this certificate on it. It has not been planted yet either.
Okay, so.
So, it has to be planted.
So, the, the project's been done, they're just, they're, they're renewing it so that they can get a.
Yeah.
Notice of commencement and notice of completion?
Yes.
So, they can get all the paperwork.
Has to be planted first.
Okay. So, you need a revised cover sheet?
Yes.
Stating the proper water, body of water.
Bill, do you want to advance pending receipt of the new cover sheet?
Ah, yes.
Okay. I'll tell, I'll talk to James.
If not, they can just put it off till, till we get.
If we don't receive it by Friday, then we'll.
Yeah, put it off to the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, if you don't have enough time, just put it off, no matter.
Okay. All right. I'll speak to James tomorrow.
I'll leave it up to you.
Okay, thank you, Bill.
No, Lisa. And the next one is Southampton Cove, property owners. It's in Southampton Cove. There's no street address on this. One Helen's Lane, Southampton. Proposed bulkhead is to measure 189 feet. Overall length includes sea walls and lay wood. Return as easement, eastern terminus along western side of existing boat ramp. To consist of vinyl sheath and sea lock was similar type, secured by timber whalers, six-by-six with, with two ties. Clamps are six-inch by 60 timber poles and a 10-foot diameter and, and timber deadman, six-by-eight. This is pretty straightforward.
It's a replacement of a bulkhead, is it?
Is there a height elevation?
No height elevation.
It's in Woolly Pond, right?
Yes, okay, the back pond.
Yep.
I don't see any problem with this.
Want to advance it then?
Yes.
Okay.
Gina, would you like to come up?
Hey.
Hello, Gina.
What's your name? AKR Shores. Thank you.
12 Lans, Lanson, at Lanson Land Lane in Southampton. Owner is Judith Mary Muscho.
Muscho, yes.
Cold Spring Pond. Application is to install 131-feet vinyl sheath and pile with bulkhead. Must be replaced land with of existing bulkhead to install two new 10-foot vinyl returns within the property lines. New bulkhead should be the same height of existing bulkhead to be backfill with about 65 cubic yards of plain fill and establish a 10-foot non-tough beach grass, one foot on center.
During the application process, the owner had requested, I asked trustee Powell whether or not raising the vinyl behind the existing timber would be possible. He specified 12 inches. He wrote a little email that he would like to meet to express to, that when the winds come from the southeast, the wave action overtops the bulkhead and.
The owner wrote it?
Yes.
Not me.
Um, hold on a second, I have to find it.
He called me today.
Yes, he called you?
You don't have, this is the, the, just east of.
Uh, when the wind comes in from the southeast, there's an incoming tide. The waves hit the bulkhead as the photo is attached. He did send, send a photo as well. Shows this whole property is flooded. I'll show that to you in a minute if that's possible. The elevation of the property slopes up to the house. The house is roughly about a foot above the bulkhead, the grade. It's, it's, the house is pretty low, is what I'm trying to say.
You can't raise the bulkhead too high, because if you raise the bulkhead too high there, if it does overlap.
I told him, I said 12 inches is, is an awful lot. It'll disperse the waters, the adjacent parcels. He said Prochner, who is just to the west, is higher than him. I just walked that and measured the dock. I don't, I didn't measure the inch height between Prochner.
I thought they looked at pretty much the same.
They looked pretty much the same to me, too.
Yeah, I was down there this morning.
But here's my point. I walked the entire shoreline because I measured Prochner, I measured to grade, I took a photo of the vinyl. He also reshathed vinyl behind his timber, by the way, pretty recently. It's kind of goes wavy because it follows the old line of the bulkhead. Bad job. But my point I'm trying to make is as I walked from Prochner to this property, Muscho's property, to number 10.
You talking about number 34 reshaped behind, which one?
Yeah, Prochner, 34, where we're doing the dock that I went out and measured. I walked the ent, all the properties, all the way down to eight, and what happens is the grade does slope up a bit as you're walking to the east, but the two bulkheads, this guy's bulkhead, Muscho, and the guy next to him at 10, is considerably lower than eight that has a real dock, an almost brand-new dock. And that photograph I did take and have on my phone, actually. Let me show you what he sent when his property is flooded.
I do have a question, being that the bulkhead-
I don't know if you can see that.
-is at a certain elevation now. And there's a wonderful-
That's when his property is flooded.
40 to 50-foot wetland in front of it.
Yes.
Elevating the bulkhead, is the wave energy going to dislodge or-
Bounce right off the sheathing?
And create loss of this? I mean, this is a, this is the perfect, you know, example of what people should have all around with bulkheads and 30 to 40 feet of beautiful wetlands in front of it as a buffer.
Right.
So what we do here, changing the elevation of the bulkhead, is the wave reverberation going to cause this nice wetland that's there going to, potential loss of it?
Kind of thinks so, Ed. I kind of, that's what I was thinking. We were talking about this with Dave-
I think that the wave energy, energy should be allowed to overtop. It's going to overtop. It's going to go in. It's going to come in the neighbor's yard.
But-
No matter what.
If it gets higher, it's just going to bounce back.
It's-
Right, no, I'm aware-
It's going to be like flying point where it just-
Right. I'm aware of that. So what I'm saying is, if we raised it a little bit, it would still overtop the bulkhead and not-
2 inches, 3 inches, it doesn't work.
And wouldn't affect the cord grass that's there.
Yeah, I mean, to, having that loss would be, you know, a real environmental tragedy.
Because that's a very good production area for-
Right. And actually, the guy at number 8, and I'm not sure the owner's name, they have a substantial amount of cord grass right in front of their bulkhead. And they're, they're actually about 12 inches higher than the number 10. And the cord grass is still doing really well.
Yeah.
That's the property line between 8 and 10. And there's a large, right, and I have the aerial, too. There's a large spot of intertidal also in front of the elevated bulkhead that's higher than this one. And if you see, this is land, this is my client here at 12. Then we have 10 and 8. It goes down.
So what is the adjoining property owner's elevation of bulkhead?
The adjoining property owner at 10 is the same height as him.
Same height.
And you notice, you notice where all the good grass is-
And there's decent cord grass in front of 12-
Yeah, but the cord grass-
And 8.
Yeah, goes down.
It lessens here.
It does lessen. You're right.
So I-
Because of the southeast winds, most likely, not because it's being scoured out.
Well, I think it could, I mean, if you raise the bulkhead up a foot-
Boat action.
That wave energy that would overtop that bulkhead and get lost on the land behind the bulkhead is going to come back off of that bulkhead and-
Yeah, I understand. And, and I don't want to compromise the neighbors to either side either.
I would like to see it left just like it is, because I mean, I think it's a, it's a wonderful area and they got beautiful wetlands in front of them, which very few properties in our town have.
True. Billy, it's totally up to you if you're going to let me go up a couple of inches?
I kind of agree with Ed. Actually, I do agree with Ed. Pretty much stay the same.
Okay.
I agree with him.
He wants to, he wants to end this today. So he said if it's an absolute no, just-
Only thing I would add on this is steps going down.
I'll revise the cover and the square footage.
And if he's worried about loss of sand or land behind it, he should put some stone for a apron or some-
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, too.
I mean, he's got a really nice property there. And it is a very productive selfish area.
Understood. And I told him that he could, he's thinking about raising his house at some point.
Yeah, that would be-
He said that's the only real solution.
Because that's what I said on the phone with him. I said, if you raise the bulkhead a foot, and then it's, the bulkhead in the backfill's going to be higher than the house. So when the water comes in, it's-
It's a pond. I told him.
It's going to go right into the front door, or the back door.
Which is, it's ponding right now, because it's getting flooded. But this isn't going to stop. His raising the bulkhead is not going to stop this water.
No.
Regardless, it's going to come around the returns. No matter what, his property is going to get flooded. It's too high during storms. So I'll tell him to raise his house.
I'd like to move this one ahead. If one fails, it's fine.
So 12 Lansen Lane, you're advancing?
Ah, yes. Then I have 34 Lansen, Eric D. Storch.
This is also for reconstruction. This one is in place with vinyl. I revised the cover to show that existing deck, which is non-treated right now. Obviously, 20-foot disturbance, it's going to be ripped up. We're going to have to put it back down.
He's going to put something in its place.
Right. Untreated materials, again, but for the structure as well. I don't know what's under there. If you notice also, we, we cut it short on the west property line, because there's a large area of intertidal marsh cord grass, bleh, cord grass right in the corner. So I cut the bulkhead. Not only is it not his property, but there's a large area of marsh right there that I don't want to disturb.
Excuse me a second. Can we go back to 12?
Oh, sure.
All the work has to be done landwards of the bulkhead?
Yes, that's on there.
Just want to make sure you understood that.
Yes. Oh, absolutely. That's why we're reshaping behind. Cause least disturbance possible.
Gina, does 12 Lansen need a new cover sheet, or are we-
I'm going to do a new cover sheet. I'm going to add the steps right now.
Okay, so 12, you're sending us a new cover sheet, right?
Yeah, and I want to see if he wants to put stone instead of beach grass.
Okay, can you get that to me by Friday, please?
I'll email it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, back to Storch.
Sorry. Just wanted to clarify.
Okay, I'm going to get you a new cover and new plans noting.
Okay, thank you.
I'll email it to you. Okay. Replace the walk, untreated lumber. We also did notice, besides, the cord grass to the last, that we want to protect and not disturb. The upland area has a couple of high marsh species. So I revised the cover and the application note. We're going to try to stockpile some of them and save them if we can. There's a lot of bayberry, there's a couple of baccaras. The scrub pines, we won't be able to save, most likely, they're too big. But there's a couple interesting species we're going to try to stop, stockpile and/or replant in kind instead of beach grass. Because it's a really nice buffer between the road and that little strip of bulkhead. And I think that-
And this one, you can, this one you should do work on the water side?
No, everything's going to be done landward until 20 feet.
Water side?
Yeah, but we're going to replace the species with high marsh instead of-
You're going to replace all that?
We're going to try to stockpile it.
Okay.
And there's a lot of stuff. Beautiful vegetation, that's obviously-
Also need to put, commit for his jet suit, Joe.
I will tell him that. I told him that at the beginning. Gotcha.
Oh boy, it's toppling in.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's in really bad shape.
He doesn't stand height. Yeah. I have no problem with this.
Bill, are we advancing 34?
Yes, please.
And no new cover sheet, right, Gina? You're good on that?
No, we're good on that.
Okay.
Other, other one needs a cover sheet.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Got it for me.
Yep, Bruce?
Mr. Walker?
Oh, I don't get the easy one.
Before we start off, I want to thank you for your taking part in the Cold Springs-
Here are matches for taken.
...association. And we got the fill placed for the dredging project on the east side of Cold Springs Channel. And it sounds like it's very successful, so.
It's a lot of, lot of sand, and the people were thrilled. And I told them they need to start with no fence program, planting beach grass and keep their kayaks and lawn chairs off the beach grass. And keep asking the trustees and Suffolk County DPW to place sand there so that they get a dune.
Well, I think having two deposition sites in that area, we can alternate year to year. And I think it's going to be a win situation for both sides. And building that beach up is going to be a wonderful thing for the community, because they'll have a beach again, so.
They probably don't understand how much dollars and cents is involved there, but that much beach sand is worth quite a bit of money.
Yes, and the county did it for the mobile cost. Yep.
So they're supposed to be sending a thank you to Scott Hillary as well.
I hope so. I was going to-
Scott, Scott should get the same thing as-
Yes.
Your group.
Can I make a recommendation? Scott Hillary and Bill Hillman and the county executive. Everybody should get thanked on that one, because it comes from the top down there.
They have to tell me how to get in touch with those other people, but-
We have contacts for them, but it's important, because it's not just, you know, Scott. It's everybody there.
To tell you the truth, I don't know Scott Hillary. I only know the guy that runs the dredge, because his son plays baseball with my son.
Good crew guys. So again, thank you, Jim.
A little crusty.
Yeah.
All right, so this is a project that Martha's familiar with, because it's been in front of the conference board. The reapproval, it's been around for a long time. This is Reiner Schombach. It's 531 and 545 Sag Road. This project was a subdivision. This used to be Crisman Partners. It was farmed for years. This property is all rainum loam. This is a dug ditch. To farm rainum loam, you have to dig a ditch and drain it. So this property was farmed for years. Part of the process at the village was to require agricultural easements. So they're going to plant stuff, and there's going to be a main house here and a guest house here, but the guest house looks like a barn. So the vista along the road, they had to remove the hedge that's there. They can leave the trees that are there, but they're going, people are going to be able to look in and see a farm field. Part of the project was a bridge, so that the people have access through the first lot to the second lot. Both lots are to be sold together and developed together.
Can never be separated.
What?
Can never be separated.
Can be separated. So the, the whole idea of the, the project is been reviewed by the village of Sagaponic extensively, also at Southampton Town Conservation Board extensively. We're in the process of reviewing the town approval, the latest wetlands approval, and meeting all the conditions of approval. There are some interesting parts of that. The, the old sanitary system's not going to be allowed. Marty Shay asked for a new sanitary system, so they're getting alternative sanitary systems here and there. So I'm in the process of doing that.
So why, why do you come before us to ask for it? This is kind of complicated.
Common read.
That bridge, you either will or won't impose your jurisdiction across the-
We wasn't quite sure, because we didn't know, since that, that is dug to drain the farm lot, farm lots years ago. Do we own that bottom, or it's, then we don't own if it's dug?
In general, we don't-
No.
Claim title over.
I don't think that's all it's done.
Where, where does the water come from? Is it just a manmade-
Sag Pond.
Oh, it's, it's an-
It's the top.
It's an arm off of Sag Pond.
Yeah, and it's dug. And it's, was dug to drain these two parcels, which were farmed by Crisman.
So- We still may regulate it, even though we don't own it.
Yeah.
It's, it's also like that place in-
We're not, we're not fighting any regulation. We're, we're simply asking for a-
No, I get it, I'm just-
We're not, we're not fighting, fighting about jurisdiction.
This thing, I think, may have been around when I was on conservation.
That could be Scott. I didn't represent the owner during the first part.
I mean-
He was approved in 2016.
I remember, yeah. But it was there.
I think we should get clear for that.
I think it, Scott, I think it was quite a few years.
Well, I mean, we're, we're going to be taking jurisdiction over a bridge, which we've done a couple of these in the past. And it's, and it's in engineering. We would have to have an engineer, you know, draw the plans up and make sure that it was- Up to town specs, we've done-
You have all that.
You have all that.
Engineer plans, we have.
Yeah. I'm just making sure, because I know, you know, and it might be, I mean, it's connected to, to the, it's an arm off of Sag Pond. It'd be very similar to like the Schinocock Shores, where the Schinocock Shores canals are arms off of Western Schinocock Bay, so.
Yeah, we, we don't know it, but we regulate it.
We regulate, but my, my biggest thing is that it, taking it, we're going to ensure that the guidelines and all the, you know, regulations of the trustees are put into it so that we get the best product for the area with the water that, where it touches the bridge, treated lumber and such, like that. So that's where I would come from. But do you want to give a little overview of this?
Of what aspect?
Well, I mean, where, where would you say our jurisdiction, our, our authority to regulate ends?
Well, the authority to regulate, in this instance, tends to come from the common practice of the trustees, because the trustees aren't claiming ownership of this small dug artificial channel, but it does connect to the bottom lands of the trustees.
Yes.
And so traditionally, as far back as I've been able to tell, the trustees have exercised regulatory jurisdiction over these, you know, manmade channels and-
It does have a trickle-down effect on our underwater land.
It does affect the products of the bottom, and they're, you know, it does connect in.
Yes.
So.
So that answers it, so they have to get a permit from us.
All, all that's fine. We're, we're not contesting any, any of that.
Sounds like you've got everything in it.
It's a non-treated lumber. It's designed by a licensed engineer. It's at the Army Corps of Engineers. It's at New York State DEC. The trustees gave, gave approval for a small dock. I think that's what I was hired to do initially. There is one other aspect that Bruce raised. We are asking for common read management in the waters that the trustees clearly own. Part of the project is wetlands creation. Part of it is agricultural plantings. And there's a lot of wetlands mitigation that's involved all through here. So part of the project that was approved by Conservation Board included work done in trustees jurisdiction, where we need to come to you now and ask for common read management. And we wouldn't need to return any other subsequent years when, when the work was going to continue. We have a three-year permit from the Conservation Board. And we have, we do have all that stuff. And if I haven't given it to you, you certainly will. These plans can also be-
Shrink down?
I was going to have a smaller own cabinet for you.
This is all before me.
Well, I think this is a, all the aspects of it are good environmental aspects.
There's the IA systems, or whatever they're called. The alternative sanitary systems are planned out for both lots. I think it's, I think it's a little unusual that a private property owner would agree that a private property owner would agree to plant an agricultural field next to a house. That's kind of cool. There's a lot of wetlands mitigation in there. There's a lot of good mitigation that the Conservation Board and the village of Sagaponak require. These lots were one, it's two. This is, this is an eight and a half acre something or another, and there's a smaller lot here, a portion to the guest house, which looks like a barn.
My question would be, is the, does the driveway swing in and make that U shape to go across and necessitate the bridge because of aesthetics? Would it be possible to go straight from one side to the other?
I don't think Marty Shay would allow that. No, there's, the water goes all the way up here.
It does.
Yeah. All, all the way along the road. There's really no great entry into the property other than right there at the front. You can drive there and look in. It's got like a cable across the, the entry, but that's it. It's, it's very easy to go walk this piece of property. It's kind of nice. It's got a lot of common milkweed and whatnot where the butterflies collect and all that other good stuff that Marty Shay has decided that those, certain of those areas don't need to be replanted, that they're already doing well. This is a ditch that goes all the way up here, turns this way and turns that way. And it's to drain the water so the rainum loam, which is good farm soil, could be used. In the past, that's where it came from. And the farm use is going to be mimicked in the front. So when people drive by, that's what they're going to see. A small barn, a little field, no hedges, stuff like that. So a pretty well, well-designed and thoughtful project culmination of Southampton Conservation Board and the village of Sagaponak.
What do you think Bruce?
I think it's a go.
I believe I know.
So the answer then.
You're advancing that Ed?
Yep. Lisa, I'm going to give you a small version of the plans.
Okay.
If you want full-scale plans, I'll give you a, a box on it. But other than that, I think we can give 11 by 17 and you'll have all the same plans that the other boards have.
Thanks Jim.
Thank you Jim.
Thanks.
Joey Day.
Yep.
The next one is Noack Harbor Association. Noack. I guess this is renewal?
Yes.
This is the first renewal?
First renewal, yeah.
Yeah. So nothing's changed. This is the project that they started and I assume you're going to try to complete it?
Uh, yes. Billy Mack, First Coastal.
Thank you Billy.
Per the original permit that we secured, which was limited to the original plan. I think we had like 60 or 7,000 cubic yards. We scoped that down so the neighborhood would have a budget to deal with. So now we're just trying to do that part, the scoped-down version of it. And I wanted to update the board on the seeding aspect.
Which I brought up prior to you being here.
Oh, good.
We were going to have a discussion. Everybody's in the agreement. The areas that were proposed are good. They just wanted to know when it was going to happen. I said I was going to call you after the meeting.
Okay.
Here you are. So we are.
Yeah, I was going to just like right now.
Yep.
And he's in. He said, just give a heads up and we'll do it.
And the clam size, I understand, are the same, similar to what we planted.
Yeah, exactly.
In our town water. So it's a, it's a good project.
And what do you plan on revegetating down there?
Uh, so the revegetation would probably take place in the early spring. And what we do with the dredge spoils, put it on the beach with an ideal location. Last time that was done, it was lost right after with a storm. So, you know, we're trying to put it in a spot that it's going to stick around, but we'd have to see the beach conditions when that's being done.
April 1st is the bird deadline down there. So just a heads up. That's.
Oh, no, no, that's, and that's an active area.
It really is, yeah.
We, we'll be out of there.
What birds are there?
Terns, mostly.
Terns.
No red knots?
I don't think there's any.
No, the red knots only stop on the way up and way back. They rest and feed them.
Eat their horseshoe crab eggs and move on.
Not this time of year that I need any horseshoe crab eggs.
So we're advanced up?
Yes.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd pack up more docks with us.
Next one is 57 Harbor Drive.
It's too windy.
I assume we're going to hold off on this since this is a dock. Now, you know, a walkway?
For the elevation of it?
Four foot catwalk. Yeah.
Yeah, this is one of the.
Spill on a holding pattern.
Yes.
Good start to 3x78 fixed catwalk.
Yes, we're going to hold, we're going to try and get the consultants to get as much information so we can draft a good letter and a report off to them and so that we can lower some of these catwalks in the areas that are appropriate. It's important.
I got one more.
Give yourself one. We may have questions.
This is going to be a renewal to 64 canoe place road Hampton Bay's. It's Eddie's property. Maintenance dredge. We passed it last year and they never got it done. So he's just renewing it.
No changes?
Nope.
Is it 31 or is it 64?
Advance it.
His mailing address is 64.
The property address is 64?
The property is 31. Like to advance it?
Yeah.
So this is Richard Hassan's property, 24 Dune Lane, Village of West Hampton Dunes. Applicant proposes to reconstruct in place 91 feet of bulkhead within a boat slip in a private dug canal off of Rich's Bay.
Yes. It's a boat slip area.
Regina, can you just state your name for the record? Thank you.
Regina Redden, DKR short.
Thank you.
It's a boat slip in West Hampton Dunes, manmade canal, privately owned actually. And he would just like to reconstruct the dilapidated bulkhead to ensure the quality of the slip.
I do. So James and I were there and we looked, we looked at the site and the bulkhead is failing right now. We are wondering if this might not be a good situation for a living shoreline rather than to replace the bulkhead in this spot. There's functioning marsh on either side. None, there are two dug canals at least to the east and neither of them has bulkhead.
The adjacent has, yeah.
So we see that there's a jet ski there. We're not sure if there's a permit for it. James wasn't here today, so I didn't.
There's no float. It's just a jet ski on a lift.
Right. So if we took into consideration that, perhaps we work with that so that the jet ski can remain, but we're questioning whether there might be an alternative to.
I'd like to contain the integrity of the slip, otherwise it's not going to be usable. And the living shoreline, are you saying rock or are you saying just plants? Okay. What's going to happen is it's all going to fall in if I let it go, if it goes anymore. It's actually still holding up the land on either side.
What we did before, I think at South Shore Boats years ago, they did a low sill bulkhead that also did another bulkhead. You place this bulkhead, but you put holes in it so the water can get behind it and feed the marsh.
Well, the water is definitely going to get behind it regardless of what height it is. It's going to get behind it.
If you give it the same height and do the vinyl and put holes in, holes with the rocks behind the holes, so that way that.
Well, I don't want to fill the area. I don't even want to touch the area, which is why I propose the double seawall system because.
You want to go in front of this?
I want to put pilings on either side of the vinyl and vibrate them to cause the least amount of disturbance to the grass, but still maintain the integrity of the slip.
Are you going to take the old bulkhead out?
The timber? Yes. It'll be cut. So the tie rods would be cut. And so I don't want to disturb the area at all. It would be cut flush and then vibrate in, pulls on either side of the vinyl. And we often do this so we don't have disturbance to this type of area.
Everything else say what behind it then?
Exactly. Now, this was applied for in the past, the DEC, and then they suggested to not disturb the core grass, high local anchors, which is the stupidest thing I've ever heard of because you can't anchor into marsh. The, the soil.
Well, if you use different.
Doesn't have.
If you use.
You'd have to go 40 feet to get this to hook. Yeah, there's no way. So I said that's stupid.
If you used a different angle on the, the plastic, like a more of an angle, you won't need dead men. You know, like a, a bigger box.
You mean go?
No.
Like that? Like actually, you could actually cut the sheathing.
No, no, I mean like.
You can do that.
No, like take the.
From ramps.
Like the, the sheathing you use is like this, right? It's, it's.
Well, this is corrugated.
Yeah, but you can use, this, this other sheet, this is longer and goes like this and goes like that. What does it need dead men? You can use that. That way you don't need any dead men because you're not holding that much up.
That's a heavier grade. That's more like a 10.5, which actually has the width of, it's about, it's 18 inches in width.
Yeah. But you won't need dead men then.
Yeah, actually, no, you probably still will. You're maybe not six on center, but.
I think, because we did permits before without any dead men. We're using these things.
I'm still in review with the state right now.
Yeah.
They haven't come back to my idea after their high local idea.
How deep, how deep is this?
A foot.
It's.
Oh, it's not like a 10-foot?
No, no, it's, it's.
It's not usable. I mean, it is by jet ski.
We wouldn't, yeah.
So low tide, there's like virtually no water here, no water here.
On low, mean low, low, it will, sand will run, yeah. Right up to the bulkhead, which is failing. Yeah.
Your question is about these bulkheads.
Correct, on either side.
Well, if you put a low sill bulkhead here, cut away two feet, the top two feet of it, then you'd be able to put a piling on either side of it and allow the, the wetlands to flourish behind it. And it would be low enough where it doesn't have the.
Cave in.
Cave in with the pressures.
I thought it was a lot deeper than that.
I, yeah.
It goes deep, but the right up.
It goes deep. So, so if you were going to put, if you were talking about a living shoreline, you put it there, it would actually just fall right off into the mud. I'm assuming it's all, is it all mud bottom here?
It's mucky, yeah.
Yeah, so it's not something where you have a, a very flat beach where you put a living shoreline and it has no place to go. Here, it's just going to roll off into the, with the nor'easter here.
Yeah.
Because the fetch is all the way from beyond point all the way over here. So you're going to get some fairly large waves. Any stones and anything, it's going to, it's going to wash in. Where a low sill bulkhead would just basically ensure the integrity of the wetlands all the way around it. And you could probably put a little bit higher bulkhead here and it would probably do it pretty, pretty well because it doesn't have the pressure on the top of it. That would be the way, you know, just my thought.
I'd have to go back and.
I'm still working on this.
Measure the grade.
Yeah.
Where.
The grade from the deep water that is shallow water and how.
Yeah. Because I think two feet's too much. So I, let me measure the grade at the landward most point where we have the, the good part of the bulkhead anyway.
Yeah.
And see what that is.
Because a low sill bulkhead is going to maintain the integrity of the wetlands and allow everything to flourish naturally and not.
Well, that's the idea anyway. It was from the beginning.
In the back part with the jet ski, you could, after you could tape it up, keep that higher.
Keep it a little higher. Well, let me see what the DEC comes back with.
There is a low sill bulkhead that we had at the old Allen Acres.
Yeah, that one.
Concord Marina, which work, is, is working out very well. If anybody wants to see what a low sill bulkhead work, looks like.
We did two, half a dozen.
But I don't want to put any fill in there. I really don't want to touch it.
You wouldn't have to.
No, I'm saying, I don't want to do that because what happens if we do the living shoreline, we actually have to fill in the wetland too. You can't place anything in a wetland. It needs to go naturally. It's against Article 25. So me producing a living shoreline in an area that's marsh is actually against New York State conservation law. So I can't really do that. I'm just trying to protect what's here right now.
I'm just observing that the two dug canals to the east, neither of which has bulkheads, are both functioning and both have integrity without bulkheads. So that's what I'm noticing.
Okay.
Do they have anything in them? A boat slip and anything?
Yeah, they're probably not usable for anything but a kayak. I'd like to keep this one usable for recreational use.
Sloped down and sloped down, everything or is it?
Ah, the adjacent, I didn't, I just noticed it to the right as I was looking and photographing.
Oh, mosquitoes now.
I didn't measure anything.
Yeah.
You need to do some more work on the plan anyways.
But I want to, let me see what the DEC says and comes back with, because obviously I want it to match. And let me measure the grade.
Other than a jet ski and a kayak, what is kept in here?
Sailboat.
He has a hopey cat.
So there's no vessels, any draft in here?
No, but I want, I want, still want to keep it functional for recreational use. And that's his answer right on the property. So let me do some more measuring and let me see what the DEC comes back with.
Thanks.
Okay. Thanks Regina. And yes.
Hold please.
Have you just, I would have been just.
Yes.
Oh, I told this guy.
You can come over all the way.
No, this is the other part of the water. It's too far up front.
Do you guys want me to hold on to these or do you guys want the folders? You guys want the folders?
I don't really.
Yeah, I'll bring them down.
Where are you going to need to explain stuff?
Yeah.
In terms of.
I have, I'm going to have a list here, but I can.
So Richie went through it a bit then, right?
Yeah, I mean, everything's pretty much vetted. I mean, there was over three.
Actually, I would just like to see his recommendation, you know?
They're all in the folders.
All right.
I think he emailed it to you guys. I just printed it out and I highlighted. Yeah.
Cut down.
I will open with you. I'm good.
You don't need to see them?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have one.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So I don't know. So yeah, Rich emailed that list. There was a few in this bucket that weren't on the list that either came in later, like a couple of late renewals. And according to my notes, the only three he had issues with were three of the new proposed hunting locations, which were in Bill's area.
Yeah, this one he said no already.
Yes.
This one, I'm reading right now.
Okay.
Which two are we on? Jess?
So the only, the three that Rich had issues with that recommended denial were Christian Axel Christopherson and the two Stanton Ambrose.
Yeah, these both are, both are denied.
All three, Bill or?
All three, yeah.
Okay, so we're denying those three?
Yeah.
Okay. I think that was recommended, right, by Rich?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And everything else Rich and I went over, we vetted if the people that are getting transferred to or adding a co-permit are on the waitlist, I will remove them as long as it gets approved. So.
And nobody that's receiving either a transfer or a co-permittee has more than two duck.
Correct. We vetted that as well.
Yeah, these two guys are good with, I mean, I know Mr. Schley could get a stroke and he isn't the best help. He's continually tried to hunt through it and fish. He's down there fishing in his walker.
Saw that. It was pretty amazing.
What are we going to do with the guys like that have four and five blinds?
Their grandfather, you can't do anything in.
I know, but now you're having a co-permittee. Who's blind is it? If, if the first guy drops off, is it the original guy or the second guy? Because they could take this to eternity.
Yeah, that's something where we have to go through the duck committee.
Right. I think what we got to do is we got to get.
What exact committee?
We're waiting for Rich to form. He's supposed to be picking the people and letting us know. Then we approve of the people with a resolution.
I think we should do it. It's our job.
We, we could do that. We could work on that. But I think what we need to do is we need to get through this exercise first and then we'll work on, the board can work on fixing whatever it is they want to fix. On mine, advancement wise, recommendation, William E. Miller Jr., Wilbert Buell, Donald W. Veek for number 38, Donald W. Veek for 39, James Hummel Jr. on number 43, James Hummel Jr. number 44, and Justin McGee, permit number 67.
They're all advanced?
They're all okay to advance.
And both of yours, Ed, were advanced?
And then I have, sorry, I have a couple of additionals that are okay to advance as well. And I have one actually, addition of a co-permittee and then a late renewal that are okay to advance. Charles E. Miller, number 69, Wilbert Buell, Wilbert Buell, permit number 78. It's a late renewal. Okay to advance it.
Okay. Thank you Scott.
Okay, so clearing that up. But trustee Stafford's correct. The board does need to work on.
Oh my, these are all good. The other ones are not. Thank you.
We need to come together and make some clarification. I think the board needs to do that moving forward. Okay. Let me pass this back.
If I may, I'm Donald Beck and I thank you for listening to me.
He has to come up here.
Excuse me, sir. You can come up and speak. You can come up and speak. You can speak. You can't speak from the seat, but you're welcome to, Justin.
You have to sign in.
You sit down and sign in, Mr. Veek. It's okay.
He doesn't bite.
We're, we're a friendly board. You're welcome to sit down and relax. I understand that it got advanced or? Yes.
What was your name?
Donald Beck.
Donald Beck.
We, we understand. We're trying to run a good program. We want people to be able to go and enjoy the resource and hunt. And we understand, you know, these, these things, these things occur and, and we're.
I understand that it got advanced, or?
Yes.
What was your name?
Donald Beck.
Donald Beck.
We, we understand, we're trying to run a good program, we want people to be able to go and enjoy the resource, hunt, and we understand, you know, these, these things, these things occur, and, and we're advancing your renewal of your permit.
Thank you.
You're welcome, have a good time hunting.
I came tonight just so you could see who I am, and if you had any questions, you know, uh, because.
We did change the date on the renewals, there was a little bit of confusion, and after discussion amongst the board with council that we're gonna go by the 2018 hunting rules that were initiated, and in 2019, we're gonna decide what is the new rule bar going forward. So, so this is like a get out of jail, bark kind of.
You're fine, you're fine.
But going forward, we, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna be a little tougher on.
Right, just keep track of the expiration dates and.
I had a situation, so.
It's okay, we understand, and it's, it's been remedied for this year, and feel free to contact our staff, they're very helpful, very friendly, with any questions.
If in the future.
You called me the next day and told me what to do, I talked to you.
Right.
We have great staff, and they really help the public a lot.
We're trying to run a very good program, there's a, there's a lot of moving parts to the program, and, um, you know, you're a, it's all square. And if you have, like I said, if you have questions moving forward.
Yep.
Just, you know, feel free to give a call, I had a schedule, and we'll give you directions so that you can, you can.
And we appreciate you coming.
Yes, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
All the same size, twenty-four inches. That's the same one, I was keeping, keep my catch.
Do we need to read individual ones into?
I don't think so.
No, if you're, on Monday.
No, because there'll be actual resolutions in the next meeting.
Yeah.
All of yours are advanced, right, Bruce?
Okay.
It's gonna be a blanket resolution for the whole.
Do you think it's necessary, like, could I group together the three denials, and then could we group together?
I think the three denials, you're gonna have to, um, separate.
The denials I would do separately, the approvals we can do together, as long as we list what they're for, the property.
That's co-permittee, transfer, you know, okay. So the three denials, we'll do separate resolutions, and then the, the ones that are advancing, we can group them into one resolution with the specific specifics, as to what the issue was. Okay.
Specific.
Because that's a lot of resolutions, an individual resolution for twenty-eight people.
And I'll, and I'll help you with it.
Okay, good, okay, we'll take care of it.
It's past your retirement.
Yes.
It's a lot.
You're right, Bill.
All right, Bruce, you good?
Yeah, are we gonna spend any time doing anything, maybe working on duck lines or the blue book, or beach events or anything?
We got.
We have stuff still on the agenda.
Okay.
Um, but, hold on, did we finish going through the waterfall permits?
Bruce, Bruce said he looked at his.
Yes.
Bruce, you're advancing all of yours?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I think Bill's the only one who has denials.
Yeah, I have three denials.
And Anne has one per hour.
Yep, and I'd like to advance that.
Okay.
Please.
Bill, did you advance the rest of your permits?
Uh, yes, I did.
Okay. I think Ed's the only one left.
No, I.
Oh, you did?
Yes, he did.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
It's okay, we're giving leniency to him.
Yes.
It's okay.
While we're on this topic, um, maybe, could I discuss with you guys the waterfall waitlist? Um, we have the six from last year that were either revoked, or whatever the situation was. Um, I've been calling the waitlist, I'm up to number eighteen, and not one person is interested so far.
With, with that blind?
For any of the six blinds that we have available. Um, I can continue to call, it's pretty far into the season to, for someone to like, get, you know, a boat ready, or a blind ready, or whatever. So I just kind of wanted to talk to you guys and see what we wanted to do about that. I mean, usually, I would be done by now, at this point in the year, and I would've already given all the spots away, but we had, you know, a couple hiccups, and it just.
I would, I would personally, I would just keep on, I know it's a lot of work for you, just go down the waitlist.
Just keep going?
Just keep on going.
And then?
And if you don't find any, when you hit eighty-eight, or whatever, if you don't hit any of those who want those six slips, I mean, there's six duck.
Yeah, there's ninety-six people on the waitlist.
Yeah, you hit ninety-six, and no one wants them.
I think eventually I would get a bite, you know, but.
No one wants them, then that means, in my mind, if no one wants, out of ninety-six people want that duck's blind sight.
Yeah.
Okay, then it, it goes away.
Okay.
And we don't.
Then we are eliminating it?
Yeah, but we really don't wanna do that, because we don't wanna start a, start a pattern.
Yeah.
Exactly. Then maybe we figure something else out, but I think you should definitely cycle through, um, that entire list to see if somebody does want them, and then after that, then the board will have a discussion.
We might, we might wanna discuss like, what they would, like, I think you were talking about before, or maybe Boo's about, just keep that open, those six ducks, um, blind sight open for boats, you know, if someone wants a boat, you know, Lotto gets it for a month.
Yeah.
Right, maybe we'll do some other program to get.
The last guy that I called was like, oh, what do I do? What do you guys do in a situation where this, where all these spots are like bad? He was like, I went to every single one of the six spots, because he lives west, and they were all west. He was like, they all have issues, like, either getting to them, or.
Duck hunting is not easy.
What do we, what do we?
It was easy.
We hire a helicopter, we drop you off at your blind, that's what we do.
If there's, if there's an access to a duck line through private property, and a duck hunter has the ability to do that, and he stops hunting it, and then no one else has that ability, I think that, that specific type of a duck line should get taken off, because it's only, you know, very few people have, you know, the ability on private property to access stuff.
Unless you can go there by boat, some, some you can go by boat.
That's the key right there, is that if there, if there are people that have boats that can get to these spots, as duck boat spots.
Duck boats.
Like, there's some, there's some spots up in, off Meacock's, they go by boat.
Okay.
Correct.
And, um, because they can't, they can't go, they can't go on the property anymore.
When the individual looked at the six spots and he said they were all bad, what were the reasons, what was, what constitutes bad?
Know what I would say? Excuse me, know what I would say? If I looked at six spots, he doesn't wanna go hunting that bad.
You got it.
And, and that's it.
I think if we're gonna run a program, and we're gonna protect a resource, you know, in a recreation, that's been a, a tradition in the town of Southampton for a long time, uh, I think that's what we need to do. And whether it's a duck blind spot, or it becomes a duck boat spot, and we work some other type of program to get people out there enjoying, you know, the sport of waterfowling, then that's what we do. But I, I would first offer it to everybody on the waitlist, since that's the program that we have, and then if it cycles through, then the board will figure out what is the best use of those spots, and maybe a duck boat.
We don't wanna lose them, but now.
No, no.
We have to find a spot for them.
So, there's ninety-six people, I'm up to eighteen, and I give everyone twenty-four hours. So, what if, so, and they have to have everything in and installed and inspected and grassed by December thirty-first. So am I doing it until December thirty-first, or until I exhaust the list?
Do you have everybody's email address?
Um, yes and no.
But if you're giving everyone twenty-four hours, you're looking at, it's gonna take you about three months. I mean, if people can't get in, I mean, the whole point is, it's not that they're gonna, maybe they don't get informed in time for this season, but the point is, they're getting informed.
For next year.
So.
Yeah, if they want, if they want the spot, they'll take it and somehow get a boat there, or gets, you know, hunt in a tent or something.
Are you calling several people at a time, or are you not calling one person waiting?
No, one person at a time.
You want to call several people and say, listen, we, we have six spots, but whoever gets back to me in the first twenty-four hours, whoever is the highest on the list is gonna get preference over those spots. You could just make all those phone calls.
Well, that's what I was also, I was actually talking about that with Lisa earlier, because I was thinking, like, it is very time-consuming to call, wait twenty-four hours.
No, no, no.
Call, wait twenty-four hours, and then if they need to get their paperwork in to me, if they do wanna take a spot, then I wanna make sure that, you know, it's, I just wanna make it fair, but also.
Could you send out an email blast to everyone?
That's what I was getting at.
And whoever responds, you know where they are on the waitlist.
Do we have everyone's email, Jessica?
They're supposed to have.
Some of these people are older.
So, before my time here, the emails were not being collected, so only like, one quarter of the waitlist has email addresses attached to it.
And I would explain that, you, the preferences, you know, in that zone of the person that's highest on the list, okay? So, just because you called and said there was whatever, and you're number seventy-two, if number sixty-four takes it, well, you're sixty-four.
Then seventy-two takes it.
Whatever.
You know something, you could do all the balance, well, like Scott says, do all the balance, and the first guys who call, you know.
Whoever's got the highest.
You walk your way out.
Yeah.
And then you get this thing done.
That's what I'll do, like, call it five people at a time, or something.
Or twenty.
A lot of these people are older, too, and they don't have email addresses, so I just wouldn't, I don't wanna be unfair.
There are six spots that call six people.
No, you have to go do more than six.
I would, I would.
But then what happens when they're all fighting, and then I have to be like, oh, just kidding?
There's no fighting.
You didn't get this.
No, no, it's not that they got a spot, it's just that there's, there's an opportunity, there's an opportunity, there are other people that are ahead of you, but we're putting you on notice, because if they, if it doesn't work for them, for whatever their reason is, it may work for you, so you're gonna have to, you know, but understand, that's the way it works. But at least you're moving through that list, just explain to people that there's a seniority, there's a rank, and, and that's the way it is.
It's worked really well, um, in the past, it's just because this year we're on such a time crunch, because it's already, like, hunting season is opening in a couple, in like, two weeks.
Well, I mean, I think you can't make that a factor in terms of contact.
Yeah.
Make the calls.
Just keep, just keep calling.
Okay.
Make those calls, call a whole chunk, and, but explain to them the right way, so they understand, they didn't just hit Lotto. There's a possibility, if these guys ahead of you don't want, I mean, twenty-four calls.
I would, I would write it, type it out in a form letter of exactly what to say, you know, so, you know, when you talk to them, you know, you can go read, write down.
Right.
You know, get an opportunity.
But that way you'll move through the list, you'll give them opportunity.
And you can, you can tell them that they can come into the office and get the, get it in black and white, just what you told them.
Okay.
Right, and you gotta tell them.
Email, you know.
They've got, you know, like you say, twenty-four hours to make that decision, because we can't sit around and wait, because then the next guy's gonna get it, that's, you gotta make a decision.
Mm-hmm. Okay, that's what I'll do. Thank you, guys.
Keep people with the resource.
Thank you, Jessica.
Good work, Jessica.
Lot of hard work.
Jessica.
Con call calls.
Check, check, check plus.
You got a good day today.
And that.
Thank you, guys. Thanks.
Amazing, right?
Check plus.
Very, very difficult job.
Does a fabulous job.
Anything else?
Uh, we still have one thing left on the agenda, trustee Powell, the duck line appeal.
We just, we already did that.
I think we talked, we talked about it.
We talked about it again.
We did.
It was, it was with the letter.
You wanted to go further? That's what he was asking.
That was, that was the only question?
That was, he was asking if you wanted to go further, back when we were discussing.
Okay, I thought we were just merely discussing the correspondence.
No.
When are we gonna make a decision?
She, I asked that question, and she was going to explain to us.
Well, I mean, I guess, do any of the trustees have any questions about the evidence that was presented at the hearing, and how it correlates to the blue book?
Are we allowed to talk about the hearing without being in the hearing?
Yeah, because this is a work session to determine how you wanna.
I, I have, personally, I have no questions, um, I've pretty much made up my mind. I heard, you know, I listened and heard, and I went down there, we, me and Ed talked to Rich Franks, um, at length about it. Myself and Ed had a couple conversations about it. I don't know what the other board members feel, if they have any questions about it, if they wanna take a, I don't know if we could take a vote, um, now, you know, like you said before, so you can write the letter, so when we do have a final vote, the letters already vote.
Well, the goal is to have a determination on for the nineteenth.
Yes.
If the trustees wanna pull themselves, they can do that, otherwise, um.
I'd like to suggest that, that area be a seasonal duck blind area. I feel, I know that goes against everything that's been happening there for thirty years, but I feel like that might mitigate some of the tension that surrounds the situation.
I think that, um, we, we actually talked about that, and I actually talked to Ed about that, um, there's a lot of areas where it has to be seasonal, where they have to be, where the duck blinds have to be moved. In order to do that for that, for any area, we have to change the blue book on that, we can't do it in this hearing.
I don't think we should look specifically at this area as a seasonal area, because there are countless areas throughout the town.
Has to be changed.
In the springtime, when I'm on the water fishing, and bait fishing specifically, and the ospreys are just arriving.
It's a mess.
Every duck line that is out there is prime territory for them to nest on, and as soon as they nest on there, the eggs are laid, then comes the raccoons, and they get predated. I know Fish and Wildlife and the, the D E C were very opposed to having duck blinds left around the meadows for ospreys to nest on, and that's one of my issues in the Sabonic Complex, Cold Springs, and countless other areas where there's extensive marshes, because ospreys just take it upon themselves to make a nest on a duck line.
And plus, um.
And it's not something that we should promote. It's, it's, if the duck blinds weren't there, then they couldn't nest on them, and then they would have a much, not that they need a bigger population, but they would have a bigger population of, you know, ospreys coming off every year.
Add on to what Ed's saying, a lot of these, ninety percent, or eighty percent of these duck blind are put away nice, then you have twenty percent, they don't even de-grass them, they just leave them alone, and they drift up on the marsh, they drift, they drift loose, they, they drift across the way, and they leave them there all summer, where it's not right. And if we have them removed, this, the people, the tourists won't see them, they will, we get less complaint, the ospreys, the raccoons, and people looking at, like, dilapidated blinds, I went by three of them today, where, um, it looks like they were just abandoned, like, they haven't even been worked on for hunting season in two weeks. And if, if someone who wants to take care of their spot, but what we gave them to use, they should take care of their, the duck blind three hundred and sixty-five days a year, not just during the duck season. They forget about it, which is not right, um, because a lot of other people see it.
They do an interview with navigation.
I mean, up in West Hampton, all the duck blinds are brought in one, one area, duck blinds are sitting, sitting on the mud, but we don't let a floating duck sit on the mud.
Yeah, and in Quogue, a lot of them are put in the old, uh, property, or Dockers is up there, uh...
The duck blinds, yeah.
Mr. Swan's property, they're all put in the lagoon, nicely neatly put away, so if you get a hurricane or a bad storm, they're not gonna break loose, crash into people's bulkheads, end up in swimming pools, you know, all kinds of bad things happen with these duck blinds.
And the guys can go bait fish around them?
I think it's a, I think it's a great resource, it's a great program, it does require sensible regulation.
Yeah, so your answer to that is, yes, a lot of areas have to be changed as seasonal, but it has to be done with a public hearing.
Yeah, there's a, there's a lot more than just issues, smaller, this is a small issue, the larger underlying issue is the whole entire, you know, township.
Yeah, I, I think we may even need another, uh, one of those specific hunting meetings like we had in Hampton Days.
Yes.
You know, everybody's gotta work together, you know?
We are gonna take, we're gonna get a lot of pullback from it, you know, and we all know this, and, but I think it's something, as a board, that we should, you know, stand tight to this.
I think we're planning to have one in March.
I think it's a good, I think it's a good idea.
I think that the people that really enjoy the hunting really need to work with the trustees, support the trustees, because we're the, we're the folks that are trying to keep, you know, to keep it all together, and protect, you know, this tradition that's gone on in the town of Southampton since its inception. It's a lot of what the trustees stand for, and I think that it requires some sensible, some sensible rules, and, you know, if you're reasonable, then people will be able to enjoy this, uh, kind of drama-free for a long time, and I think that's what this is all about.
Don't hand it to Martin, it's a, it's a relaxing time.
I'm doing 25 pounds nowadays.
It's less than 25. It's less than 25. Anyway, we'll, we'll, we'll work on this, but I think that people should work together on finding solutions that make sense, as opposed to just butting heads for no good end result. Okay? I don't know, does that answer your question?
I think so.
No, it, it, it's a much larger question, so...
We're still in session here.
Yes, does anybody else have...
Well, are we gonna take a vote on, or are we gonna wait until the next meeting?
It's a council question.
Well, as I said earlier, if you guys wanna, you know, if Ed wants to formally poll
Yeah, I would like to, I mean, I...
We can do that now, that would help me write my decision.
I know the amount of time that I spent with Jess and James, and GIS maps, and distances, and, and, you know, I did do my due diligence, and I did bring it to Richie Franks, and with Trustee Powell, and we did go over the distances in town property versus private property, so I'm in favor of, you know, Mr., you know, Mr. Robinson getting his blind back, and Mr. Becker getting his blind on his property that's on the north side of Davis Creek, so, in this adequate area for the, the two hunters to hunt there safely, so...
And happily.
And happily.
I agree with Ed, so my vote's the same as Ed's.
I, I agree as well, I think that Mr. Robinson should have a spot, and there's plenty of space there for, for Mr. Becker to have a spot, and, um, they could all, they could all go hunting safely and enjoy waterfowling, and, um, I agree with both of you.
Happily, yes.
The safety is what I'm concerned about, so that's why I was hoping that something could be done to mitigate some of...
Well, the Bay Constable's have determined that, I mean, they have to meet the minimum
Right.
safety requirements of the DEC when they recommend a spot.
The distance, and they have to take the safety gun, gun...
Which, yes, and they were, they both took the hunter's safety costs, and they were both giving, given hunting licenses by the New York State DEC, which would qualify them that they're rational people, and that they would hunt safely, so. They've already been vetted through an organization like the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, as far as their hunting and abilities, so, and I had this discussion with Bay Constable Franks, and he agreed with me, so...
Well, if we move forward with this now, then can we circle back around in the spring with a meeting about seasonal duck blind areas in the town?
Should we also make a decision on the field?
That's a different issue.
No, no, I understand that, that's why I said, if we move forward with this now, then...
Yes.
Trustee Stafford?
How about that? I, uh, listened, uh, to Mr. Robbins and Mr. Becker, I really feel sorry for Mr. Becker. I don't think he's proved his case to me, and I'm a hunter, um, but I'm gonna do the right thing. I think Mr. Robinson deserves to, um, have his blind, and that'd be my vote, and Mr. Becker could have his blind on his property.
So it sounds unanimous.
And we should probably make an, uh, some kind of statement that Mr. Becker has found a new area to go hunting in there, because Mr. Christopherson has asked for this area, but Mr. Becker has, under the homeowner rule prior to us getting rid of it, Mr. Becker has the ability for that spot.
That spot was discovered prior to us.
And, and Mr. Becker has to also realize, too, and with the letter you read, if he does not use that spot, then it's available for someone to take.
Yep.
Correct.
Okay. You good?
All right.
All right. Uh, one, one other thing about the shellfish reseating, Cornell Corporate Extension, uh, Trustee Powell did call me up and asked me about why we put scalps west of, in Western Schinocock Bay, and I said at the meeting that we were gonna...
I misunderstood him.
Uh, we were gonna put scalps, no clams, Chris Gober has been reached out to, he's gonna come to a meeting explaining the mortality within the clams, so scalps went in Western Schinocock Bay, Cold Springs Pond and West Neck Pond, and the clams went in Cold Springs, West Neck, and North Sea, and the remaining oysters went in the same spot as they went in a couple years ago in, uh, Sec Harbor Cove, all around all the rocks and cobble that are there. Okay? So...
I just want to clarify, Dr. Gober's coming in for the December 17th meeting.
Okay.
That's when he's available to come and...
Okay, yes, at 1:00.
Okay, right.
I just want to touch on one thing before, uh, according to Lisa P. downstairs, our total fund balance as of October 31st was, uh, $1,228,000 roughly, with $220,000 set aside in the restricted road fund for maintaining those trustee roads, which leaves an available fund balance of just over a million dollars, so we always like to try and stay in that just over a million dollar mark, obviously, you don't know what's coming down the pike at any point in time, so you want to maintain a very healthy board of trustees, so that we can continue to protect and defend public access and the environment as we need to. So...
Payroll, too.
Yeah, so, well, that's all factored in, and I'm going there next, is that we're gonna be looking at some, uh, some budget paperwork as we move forward, uh, so if anybody has any ideas, we're gonna be working off of kind of how we ran prior this year, we're gonna be making some adjustments for our CPF for the Meacocks Plan, but on the other side, there's some debt service that we're gonna be taking on because of the projects that we're gonna be going on, the Bay Crest, Bay Avenue, you know, so forth, uh, beyond shores canal will come down at some point in time, so it'll all offset, so if anybody has...
Fort Pond project will be, you know, paid up, so that money, the agewarm...
Right, Fort Pond project was a little bit different, because that, we got a chunk of it paid for by the town out of the, out of the, and then we paid the rest of that in cash, so that one's kind of, you know, kind of okay. It's the other ones moving forward, we're gonna be working down 15-year bonds, so at the end of the day, it's gonna be fine. Now, this year, and, and for 19, we're gonna also have a contingency line, because we don't know what's gonna break, you know, we don't know what's gonna happen this year, we ended up doing some work on the barge, the new barge, so we're gonna have that line in there, so we don't have to be to the taint, but if anybody's got any thoughts or ideas, get them to me. Like I said, we've worked off the numbers that we've had, and there will be a contingency line, so we're doing fine, but if you do have any thoughts, feel free to get them ahead of schedule, okay? Streamline it, all right?
Bruce has brought to my attention, as has some of the people up to the west, and